Good morning, everyone. It's the 10th of August and this is the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee for the 10th of August and it's nine o'clock. I'll call councillor attendance and in the room we have councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Feakner, deputy mayor and councillor Kunselman. I have an apology and a request for a leave of absence for, actually before I did that, I'll do the audio link one first. I have a request from councillor Nicole Johnic. She's asked if she could attend today's meeting via audio link. And so in accordance with section 254K of the Local Government Regulations of 2012 and 9.6.2 of the council's meeting procedures policy, I move that councillor Nicole Johnic be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Just checking in councillor Johnic that you can hear us and we can hear you.
I can, thank you.
Wonderful. Let's have a request from councillor Madsen for an apology today, but also for a leave of absence for today. So I move that we provide a leave of absence to councillor Madsen. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? I put it to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Thank you very much councillor Johnic. I now move on to the acknowledgement of country. And if today's council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and the waters we share, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. I now call for any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. There are none, thank you. There is nil business outstanding. So we go to item one, which is the confirmation of the minutes.
Sorry, I do have a declaration of interest.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Johnic.
Hang on one moment. So I'd like to inform the meeting that I have a prescribed conflict of interest in item number two titled Development Application 11235-2022-MAOC. Recommendation Remondus Australia Proprietary Limited Change Application for Compost Manufacturing Enclosed at Swan Bank, as defined in section 150EJ of the Local Government Act. The nature of my interest is I have two brothers that work for the applicant. In accordance with section 150EM of the Local Government Act 2009, I will leave the meeting whilst the matter is discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Johnic. Appreciate that. And I think councillor Ireland, did you say you have a conflict of interest as well? No? Okay, my apologies. Any other conflicts? Thank you very much councillor Johnic. We now move on to item one, which is the confirmation of minutes. Does anyone have any questions of council officers on this matter? In that case, I'll move that the minutes of the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee held on the 13th of July 2023 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any errors, omissions, corrections? I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We're now moving on to item two, so I assume councillor, you'll be popping out.
I'll leave now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We now move to item two and that is the development application 11235/2022/MAOC. Recommendation that Remondus Australia Proprietary Limited Change Application for Compost Manufacturing Enclosed at Swan Bank. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to lectern for some questions, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. This is Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. I have a couple of questions on this particular one. How many submissions did council receive for this compost facility? And have they addressed council's concerns raised in previous submissions?
Council received three submissions on this application. So the content of the submissions related to matters that you'd probably expect from a compost manufacturing, so things like odour. There were also concerns about impact on the road network, impact on other compost manufacturing facilities and compliance with the TLPI were probably the main issues. Oh, and stormwater, management of stormwater. So those issues had been managed or addressed through the assessment application and the sections of the report will deal with them. But I suppose as a starting point, the odour is probably the main reason. People would make a submission or be concerned about the proposal. As you'd be familiar with, in our efforts for achieving compliance in this space, odour is largely managed through the Environmental Authority with assistance from DES, or DES is the one who manages that aspect of the proposal. However, it is something that we're conscious of and we are involved in because there are code dependencies, I suppose, in achieving compliance for these sorts of uses. So however, there are conditions on the proposal and compliance regime that DES will carry out. But the main way that odour is dealt with, the primary way that odour is dealt with this use is through enclosing the use and carrying out the composting in an enclosed building, which is consistent with what the TLPI requires. So enclosed composting is supported, whereas open composting isn't supported. And that is the main method of dealing with that issue and is the reason why DES is satisfied that there won't be, well, to put it their way, is to be designed to avoid and mitigate environmental harm. So that's how the odour will be dealt with, primarily by enclosing the use. As for traffic, there will be some road upgrades to the frontage of the use that are appropriate for the volume of traffic generated. Then the submissions related to a section of the road where this use won't be accessing or won't be impacting upon. The existing Remondus use does use a portion of that road, but we aren't able to make conditions that aren't related to this particular change. However, we have applied conditions as best we can to address those issues with the road frontage. So there will be a small section that will be upgraded. Stormwater will be managed on site with appropriately designed detention facilities. It's actually a bit unique. It is one of the few uses that can actually reuse that sort of water that is generated on the site as part of the composting process. A lot of stormwater detention facilities or bio-retention basins are just a discharge-only system. Some of this water can be reused, which is, which is good. So there are appropriately qualified designs for the retention of stormwater that addresses that issue. And finally, that's probably, they're the main issues that have been raised. Oh, the final one relates to, sorry, the impact or financial impacts on other composting uses, which is not really something that council is able to consider when talking about a commercial competition arrangement. What we're looking for is assessing the impacts of the land use. And there are some occasions where need is something we're looking at, but not particularly in this case. It isn't one of the assessment benchmarks.
Okay, thank you, Mr Bowles. I'm going to raise odours because our community has been put up with odours from non-compliant waste companies for many years. And you've talked about it being in case, but how can we be absolutely sure that this facility won't emit offensive odours? What is in place?
Yep. So look, that's a fair question. A lot of the issue with the odours in this locality, and you can sort of see the odour heat maps in the reports, a lot of the issues are coming from existing outdoor composting manufacturing facilities, which over time we hope to see transition to enclosed facilities similar to this one. Really, the only way to actually remove these odours from these other lawful uses is for them to transition to an enclosed facility. One of the reasons why it is difficult for that transition to occur is the cost and the availability of feedstock and things like that. Council will be increasing its contribution to green waste through the FOGO programme that we're adopting, which is something that in a way is quite helpful for getting other green waste operations to be able to adapt and change to this style of processing. So really, the only way to reduce the overall odours in the area is to have more facilities enclosed. So this proposal is one of those facilities that will be enclosed and most of the odour is contained and filtered through a bio-filter system to reduce the odours that are generated from that activity. It isn't going to reduce the odours from another facility, unfortunately. It will also still have some odour. So the finished stock, the pasteurised material does emit some odour. But compared to an open window, it's a fraction of that. It's about maybe one-seventh of the odour. So most of the odour is emitted during the composting process where a lot of liquid waste is added. That is the part that happens outside at some operations and that is the main contribution to odour. That isn't happening here. So we're fortunate in that this isn't the first enclosed facility that this council has been able to assess an application on. So you might recall the WMI application, which the council approved a little while ago. Very similar. There are some differences in that that had a biofuel component, which was able to use some other extracted resources. What we should expect in the future is there is a transition to these enclosed facilities is a reduction in odour. This is really the way to achieve that because we aren't reducing the waste quick enough to eliminate the need for this type of facility.
And does council have any legal reason to not approve this application?
It would be difficult. So the council is able to make, make a decision not to approve it. That would be subject likely to an appeal afterwards. The type of application isn't a new use. Well, we're adding a use, but we're changing the existing approval. So there's an existing approval for a landfill on this spot and the area that they are proposing the use. I think it could be argued that this type of use will have fewer impacts than a landfill use. It speeds up the remediation of the section of land where the site is located. So it would be difficult to argue that they're creating new and negative impacts when we're potentially reducing them through the introduction of this use. Not that that is the only test. When we're carrying out an assessment of another change application, we are assessing it, the new component essentially like a new application in that it goes to the same person, it goes through public notification as well. But it's in the context of what is changed from the existing approval being a landfill. So it's not in isolation. It's within the planning scheme and in consideration of the existing land use, which makes it difficult to create an argument that we should be refusing or recommending a refusal on the proposal.
Noting with, I know it's a different site, but Cleanaway and Cell 3B and obviously the groundwater level changed. The retention by retention basis on this, how does that interact with groundwater and what's, what's in place for that?
What the, the function of the basin is to collect any sort of concentrated flows of water that are normally collected on a hard stand. Or if in the, where there's a scenario where there is no buildings there, it just falls on the ground and eventually flows through the natural channels and valleys and things like that and pools. So there are already some pools on the site which retain water. There's one near the road. But this is a new basin in a location where it is collected and channelized and then directed to a lawful point of discharge.
I guess what I'm asking, how do we make sure this is not another Cell 3B?
Yeah, okay. Well, the main, I suppose the main thing is we're not digging into the ground and accessing or making contact with the groundwater table. The stormwater basin is a, is, its main purpose is to restrict the amount of flows leaving the site so that it isn't a scenario where it's worse than it was if there was no development. So it concentrates it, but it releases it at a slower rate. It doesn't interact with the groundwater directly like digging into the ground would do. It is a basin, but in terms of depth, it's nothing compared to a base, a landfill cell. It doesn't have that sort of lining system or anything like that. Its purpose is to capture and slow down the pace of the water leaving the site. But it still goes to a lawful point of discharge.
Thank you. I'll open up for any other questions. I think councillor Doyle.
Yeah, so sorry, just while we're on that point, I think page 30 of our papers undermining, there's a comment around over-extraction. Sorry, this is specifically addresses the concern the mayor's just raised about leakage and problems we've seen in the past. So I think it's the third point down, over-extraction and compaction of areas formerly backfilled with a product storage area and leakage dam as proposed. Is that suggesting that will go on top of an area that has been significantly excavated or mined?
The whole site has had various types of mining impacts, yes.
Is there not one particular area on the site that hasn't been mined that, that they could put this securely, safely?
I think, well, there may be some sections of the site that haven't been affected by mining. But it would depend which type of mining you're talking about because there is sections that are affected by open cut mining and there's sections below that affected by mining tunnels that go extremely deep. What would be probably the better thing to do with formerly affected, mining affected sites is remediation. So this section deals with how those portions of the site where the, either the facility or the stormwater facility are going to be located, they need to be, the land needs to be fixed. Basically, it needs to be compacted correctly. Any areas that have had a heating on them needs to be, you know, cooled essentially, watered down to prevent that. And there needs to be liners on that heating. If those things don't happen with this use, what happens is a landfill will go in as the remediation approach. So that land will be further excavated and liners will be put in and, and waste will be deposited in that location. Because the existing approval allows for a landfill where this particular facility goes. And at the time the approval, those approvals were issued, landfilling was considered the appropriate way of remediating it. Whereas with the approach that has been taken by the applicant, the land has been remediated and turned into a facility that can be used as a functioning industrial site, which in my opinion is a, is a better way to remediate the land.
Thanks, Mr Bowles. Just another question. You talked about in-vessel obviously being more expensive and we know that from our discussions with other operators, that both the running and capital costs are far greater than the windrow. How sustainable is this business model? Because we've previously been told that the product produced, that they'll be priced out of the market. It was just so cost prohibitive. But this operator obviously believes they can be successful?
I'm not fully learned on their business practices. Other than I know that the company is an experienced operator, but also the fundamental component of it is access to feedstock. If there is a continuous Um, if there is a continual supply of feedstock that makes the uses, um, more competitive, um, and more, uh, able to, um, fund this level of capital investment. Um, the, there's a variety of feedstocks and some of them are worth more than others. Um, but the most, the ones that generate the most revenue are the ones that cause the most impacts, so liquid wastes. Um, if you are able to manage those liquid wastes in addition to green waste, um, in a way that doesn't create odor impacts, it creates a more financially viable system. Um, if you're in a scenario where you need the green, the green waste and the liquid waste to operate, but you aren't able to manage the impacts, what you find is you end up running a system that may be profitable, but may not be achieving the appropriate level of environmental compliance. So what this level of investment does essentially is allows increasing amount of feedstock and therefore increasing essentially, um, profits to be paying off that, um, initial capital investment. But it, it only works if you can manage the impacts because otherwise you get into the same scenario that we're in with some of the other operators where we're having a compliance difficulty and...
And that's what I'm sort of, um, getting at and was concerned about. And so the other part in that is, I guess, when we think about, you know, the costs of, of this, um, it's not producing energy, so we know rising fuel costs. Um, I think, and I'm not an expert in this, but is it the anaerobic that produces energy as part of the process? This, this won't, so they're going to have their energy running costs?
Th- this doesn't have an anaerobic component. It is able to be adapted in future to have one. Um, the, the facility itself doesn't use all the land. Um, the, the land is quite a large parcel, um, and there are other parts that may be rehabilitated to, um, potentially include expansion for that sort of use. Um, if it isn't needed at the moment, um, I, I would say that they've found a way to make it profitable without it. Um, but I, I can't really speak for the cost, um, benefit approach they've got. To be honest, as, as we, I've seen throughout many years of this, this business is that not every development approval is actually financially viable once we issue it, um, and they don't always go ahead. So, um, I can't say for a fact that this will go ahead. Um, but I do know that one of the key inputs or the reasons why these sorts of uses is, um, viable is increasing supply of, um, in, you know, feedstock.
That's key to it.
And it's not go, it isn't going away.
Yes, we know that, thank you.
Do you think councillor Fichtner had a question?
Uh, do we know if the technology proposed here is a first for Remondus?
I don't know the answer to that. Um, might be able to get an answer from someone else for you.
That, that's fine.
Sorry, I, I'm not, I, I know that this, this is a, a fairly common approach, but I don't believe this is, um, a first for Remondus, no.
Okay.
I've, I've been, I've been assisted from the, someone in the chair, sorry.
Yep. Um, and just speaking more broadly about the approval in front of us, um, we know that across the industry, a few of the approvals that exist currently haven't aged well. Um, and there must have been lessons learnt. Do you have any reflections on how potentially some of the mistakes of the past have been remedied in the approval given, or the approval provided to us here in the papers?
Um, we're still in the process of remedying some of the older approvals. Um, the main thing that we've learned that, um, we're not going to replicate in this scenario is open windows for the composting and mixing process is a major cause of, um, odor. Um, and what we've found is at the time that those approvals were issued, we didn't have the same level of residential encroachment as we do now. We know that those, these, um, these homes are nearby. We know that we need to manage the impacts, so we're not able to replicate what was approved or the approach that was taken in the past. The alternative is the enclosed composting manufacturing. And we have seen in other examples in southeast Queensland specifically that these, this type of manufacturing is able to contain the impacts consistently in a way that doesn't have the same level of impacts as the previous uses that we've seen. Um, so we, we're not, we're not working on a hypothetical basis. We have southeast Queensland examples that show that this is a functional way of dealing with the odor impacts from this type of use. Um, so the main, the main learning has been, um, preventing further open windows. Um, that's, that's, that's really the key.
And just noting that one, i- if, if the approval goes through and odor does become a problem, it's not the responsibility of the local government to enforce compliance on that?
Um, not strictly no, but we work together with, compliance on these sorts of land uses is usually a team effort. Um, because there are council conditions and there are EA and SARA conditions, so conditions from DES. If there is normally a, uh, an odor issue, it's almost certainly related to an aspect of our approval that we'll need to follow up as well. So free, um, in other examples, yes, there is an odor issue, but there is also a, uh, an expansion of a, a use area, which is something for us to deal with. So in most cases, it's a combined effort. Strictly speaking, the odor components are managed under the EA with, um, DES. But as I said, we, we work as a team because if there's a reason, there's ultimately a reason for the odor and we need to get to the bottom of that, and that may be something related to our development approval as well. So for example, if the, um, operator had stopped functioning, uh, operating the facility in the way that had been designed or approved or didn't construct a certain aspect, for example, a stormwater basin. Um, if they decided, you know, well, we don't want to do that, um, that would be an issue for us. Um, and things like that could contribute to odor. Um, if they, if, you know, for example, if they didn't install the, um, biofilter, that would be a problem for us, um, and it would, it would manifest as, um, excessive odor that DES would be involved in. So it's, it's sort of a combined effort most of the time.
So, thank you. So, any other questions, councillor Fichtner? Thank you, councillor.
Mr. Bowles, for the last three weeks, there's been a really bad, um, odor issue, especially Division One. And, um, I guess I wasn't aware that we should also notify planning about the odor issues because we've been advising the residents to fill out the, um, odor abatement teams form and then we send their written complaints through to the state members.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so in future, we, uh, we should also notify planning?
Well, the, the starting point would be the Odor Abatement Task Force. What would normally happen is the task force would investigate the site to determine what the source of the odor is. And if it is something related to the planning approval, then we'd be notified separately. So, um, unless if the residents are able to identify the non-conformity with the development approval, it can be, it can be, um, in, counterintuitive. We, we really need someone who's an expert in detecting where the odor is to find what the source of the odor is for us to be involved in the compliance. And, and in those uses that are currently causing odor, we are heavily involved in that compliance activity already. Um, so, and we, and that is one where a council is involved in and is taking steps admittedly. It is, um, it does feel gradual, um, it is just a difficult matter to get to the bottom of it sometimes. Um, but i- it, it's really important to identify the, um, inconsistency with the approvals so that we can, I, you know, be assured that we have a jurisdiction to uphold and, and a, a process that we can go through. But I, I think the advice that you've given your residents to contact the, um, Odor Abatement Task Force is, is sound and would be the, the first step.
I think they're just getting so frustrated, three weeks. Um, on Saturday I was approached by, um, a representative from, um, the schools in the Ripley Valley saying that the students, um, aren't sleeping properly because of the odor, they're not eating. It's affecting their learning life. I think three weeks has been a long time. And in the report, it says that the air quality, um, went to SARA and then ultimately to DES. But, um, I didn't see where they have asked for some sort of a nap to go on to the emission chimney so that people around can see whether the odor might be coming from this facility on- once it's up and running.
Um, I, I don't think SARA was, would be able to, um, have that request. I think that would be a sensible thing for an operator to have available to, um, improve their social licence. And I certainly think that's, um, the approach that, um, Remondus could take. That would be beneficial for them to make sure that they can say, yes, we, I know there are odors, but no, here are our, um, our odor quality testing. I think they would be able to do that. Um, it isn't a requirement from DES at the moment though. Um, and, and the point you make with regard to the odor is, is, you know, a major concern for the community. Unf- unfortunately, there needs to be steps forward to be able to, um, reduce the dependence on the open composting manufacturers that we currently have available to us. At the moment, um, the approval issued for WMI hasn't been constructed and depending on the scenario, it may not get constructed and, and the same might occur here. But until, until we are replacing, um, or have a way of, um, dealing with the waste in a better way, we're going to continue to rely on open air composting and we're going to continue to have odor. It needs to be a step forward really to, um, enclose this sort of, these impacts and have them filtered and things like that before we're going to see a reduction. Until something is actually reducing it, um, even when we achieve compliance, um, there are still going to be some odors around. It's unfortunately the nature of the, the, the type of use.
Um, I, I believe that there's another operator in the facility, in the, um, vicinity, um, at the back of Red Bank Plains, who has been saying they are going to do in vessel. Do we have any, um, powers to make them do it?
Um, not, not directly. Um, our main tool is compliance with an approval, um, and, you know, in some cases, um, going through the court process to ensure the compliance is achieved. Um, DES has a process to transition uses, so a TEP process, um, which is a transitional process for users to, um, improve their environmental performance. And as a result of that process, occasionally they will suggest that they need to go to an in-vessel, um, process. Really, the, the main way is, um, controlling it through a development approval, um, that we would, as the council would issue. Um, and that isn't something that we can force someone to do unless if they're in a scenario where there's no other way to achieve compliance with, um, environmental outcomes that the EA will have. So, um, it's a bit of, um, a difficult situation really for some of the uses that we can have. All we can seek for them to do is return to their existing approvals, which in some cases is a much smaller operation. Um, e- even in doing so, um, some of those uses will emit odors by the nature of being an open composting facility. So, um, forcing it is, isn't easy, but what we can do is seek to return uses to their, um, original approved state if they're not compliant with their approval.
Um, I guess, um, the residents are pretty fed up with the odor. And, um, I know that there's talks about peaceful protests and, and all sorts of actions going to be taken. What, what can council do to sort of quell, to quell those actions?
We're, we're not, unfortunately, we, these people have been putting up for a long time on the odor. Um, it isn't something that council is, um, has ignored. We're, we're going through the, the court to seek changes, um, or to seek compliance with existing approvals. We are spending the time and effort and money, um, seeking change. There is resistance on the efforts to seek conformity with the existing approvals. It's been frustrating for me personally and also for our, um, officers who have been, um, you know, um, carrying out assessments in good faith that what they will see on the ground is what they've approved and the impacts are expected rather than what we're getting. So, um, we feel the frustration from the community, um, but there certainly has been quite a lot of effort and, um, essentially financial, um, you know, uh, backing essentially through the, 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 um, appointment of legal professionals, externals to council's legal team, for example, to help us assist, uh, to, to go through the prosecution process. So, um, we've, we've certainly done quite a lot, um, to push forward. It's just, it isn't happening as quickly as we'd like, unfortunately. So the alternative is for, um, council to support, um, alternative ways of processing the waste that are causing the, the odor. So there's really two paths, we get conformity or we, we, we get technological change essentially.
So, Mr. Bowles, would it be fair to, to say that, um, we need to make sure that council's conditions are clear? Uh, so that the justification between ourselves and DES is very clear, so it needs to be very clear. Um, and so when a site is complete and compliant with all the planning approvals, any odor actions would be under the EA and, and Department of Environment and Science, would that be?
That would be, i- it is best to have the conditions so it is clear whose responsibility is, yes.
Thank you.
Do you feel that we've achieved that through conditions here?
Um, with this proposal, I, I'm comfortable, yes. Um, historically, I think we did try our best, um, and I think it was at the time consistent practice to do the way we've done it. Um, I think this, uh, this one is a little different in that it is constrained by the existing approval. So we can, um, there are some existing conditions that we can't change, there are parts of the existing approval that we're, we're not able to amend, but we can add on conditions related to this use. So I'm comfortable with the approach that we've taken.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Bowles? Yes, councillor Wilson?
Uh, Mr. Bowles, do these, um, conditions include restrictions on how waste is, the green waste is transported to the site?
Uh, a- as in the types of vehicles or, um, I don't, I'll have to check now, I don't think so. We, uh, we ha, the way we're able to manage those things is, you know, volumes and requirements for weigh bridges and things like that. Um, a lot of the volumes are related to the EA. Um, so for example, the, the, the cap or the amount of tonnage that they are able to produce is, um, in the, in the environmental authority. Um, in this particular location, the road network is a state-controlled network. So a lot of the, um, ability to restrict mu- vehicle movements on that network isn't one that we have. Um, so, um, the actual method of transport on the vehicles is also something that is difficult for a council to control. Um, but it isn't a feature of this, um, this proposal or the conditions, so.
I, I thought you'd say that. I, I noticed that one of the submitters had brought up the subject of how it's transported and what conditions apply to that.
Um, unfortunately, that's, um, a little bit outside of the scope of our approach here.
Any other questions, Mr. Bowles? Yes, councillor Halli?
Yeah, thanks, uh, mayor. Um, I've just got a few questions. Firstly, what's the distance to the nearest residential area from this facility?
Uh, I, I might have to...
Or approximately.
Uh, if you give me a second, I can probably measure that. Okay, um... Approximately seventeen, uh, one point seven Ks, I would say, maybe, maybe a little bit. Yeah, one point seven Ks.
That's fine, thank you. Now, on the top of page twenty-seven, um, of the, um, report, it talks about the receiving of liquid waste streams, we've touched on that. Do we know what, um, specific types of liquid waste streams are proposed?
I will have to have a quick look for you. Um, I can, I, I don't think I can answer that specifically for this operation. I can give an example of other wastes. So things, examples of liquid waste are things like cooking oils, um, from grease traps, um, uh, waste from, um, meat processing facilities, um, uh, what's another example? Um, trying to think of the worst ones, uh, they're, they're the two main ones.
It, could it include toxic waste?
No, no, uh, that, that, there's some regulated waste that you aren't able to use, um, to comply with these. There's an Australian standard that determines what is acceptable to be used, uh, um, for pasteurized composting, um, facilities. I d- I don't have access to that standard in front of me, but that will, um, detail what is acceptable and not acceptable. There are some limits, but to be, to be honest, some of the stuff is, is, um, is odorous, very odorous, um, which is why it's best to have it contained in a facility like this.
Okay, um, on the top of, uh, page twenty-eight, it talks about, um, uh, screened compost, um, being stored outside for, uh, six, at least six weeks. Now, uh, I assume that that, that comment within our report, the officer's report, might also, um, relate to one of the objections, with objectors that raises the issue of, um, the outdoor area where there'd be, um, odor impacts. Um, so what's the validity of that aspect of the objection? Um, i- 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 if I'm reading this correctly, you've, you've got the outdoor area and objectors saying that has the potential for odor impacts, um, de- despite the enclosed nature of the general operation. Um, are you able to comment on that, please?
Yes, so the finished mater- material... Yes, so the finished material still does have an odour. It is just significantly lower than the odour emitted from the processing component. So it is valid to say that the outdoor component will emit odour. It emits odour though at a much lower rate and not a rate that brings it above the already background odour from that area, which is admittedly high because of the existing uses. But it's about one-seventh of the odour of an open window, for example, so it's much, much lower. And it's really, to compare it to something you might be familiar with, it is close to finished product, it has been pasteurised. So if you were to put it in your garden, it would be similar to that sort of odour in a way. It would be, but obviously it's a much larger amount. But look, it does have odour, but compared to a window, it's significantly less.
Just fine, thank you. Just finally, on page twenty six, it talks about the process, having the entire process, I assume, minimum external impacts. And elsewhere in the report, it talks about limited, nil or limited odour discharge. Could you just comment on whether that just refers to that outdoor area or the entire process that we're using the word minimum or limited odour discharge? Is there a risk in relation to that because of our uncertainty or the general uncertainty of the nature of the operation and whether or not odours can be successfully contained?
So there's really two areas where the odour could come from. So the one that would be the major generator, I suppose, would be the outdoor storage area, which we talked about a minute ago. But the worst odours are contained within the facility, which is under negative pressure. So it isn't blowing outdoors, for example, it's, the air is getting sucked in when doors are open. So the doors are sealed for the vehicles before, you know, before they enter and they come in and they close again. There's negative pressure while the door is open, keeping the air in. After that, it is going through a biofilter process and there's quite a large biofilter on this site where the air is collected and pumped through. If it isn't reused in the site, it is emitted through the biofilter, which is a process where the biological processes essentially scrub the air from the odour from the air and allows it to be emitted at a rate which has much lower odour. So I think there's a combination of sources of odour. So the extracted air would be quite low because of the biofilter and the storage area. So there's no denying that there will be some odour. However, the amount of odour is significantly less than the, essentially the background odour. So there's already odour in that area because of the existing land uses. If you were to lower the other background odour, this would be contained to a level which would be acceptable under the, under DES's requirements. So normally the requirement is two and a half odour units at a sensitive receptor. So the source of the odour, the compost, this stored area is 0.7 odour units. So it's emitting 0.7 when the acceptable limit for a sensitive receptor is 2.5. So the problem is all those other sensitive receptors are already above 2.5 because other uses are around. So when, in the future, when all those uses are reducing the amount of odour, this particular use will only be contributing from the outdoor area, 0.7 odour units to that, which is less than the 2.5. And that's at the source.
Thank, sorry. Just final question from me, Mr Bowles. Just so I'm clear, if we don't approve this change, the original DA stands and so that will, can be landfill, is that right?
Yes, that's right. In fact, part of the site can still be used as landfill under the current approval. So this Corns Office section, you know, it becomes a site that is partially remediated, that might be suitable for other uses in the future. So for example, the anaerobic sort of digestion we talked about before. So it may be an encouragement for the operator to consider using the site and remediating the site for higher and better industrial uses, but it is capable of being used for landfill and particularly, and more so if the recommendation isn't approved.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman?
Just in relation to that, could you just clarify the existing approval? Does that cease upon this approval or only if the, this proposed approval is exercised? Or would they still then continue to operate concurrently?
Concurrently. So this approval change, or this proposal changes the existing approval?
Yes.
It changes a portion of the approval because the approval is actually over quite a large number of parcels of land. A large amount of the approval has already been essentially started or enacted, so the Remondus landfill facility is essentially part of that. It does essentially override a corner of it and it takes that part out of the landfill. So part of it won't be able to be used as landfill because of this change, but the surrounding area continues to be able to be used as landfill. So it doesn't cease the other parts, but for a section it does.
That section, the smaller section that you're referring to, if they don't exercise this approval, do their landfill rights still continue over, under the existing approval for that segment?
So the, there's actually a little example of what gets changed. It actually, if you look towards figure four and five, you can see four is the...
Sorry, what page is that?
Sorry.
Twenty three.
You'll see a fairly large area and then you'll see a section that is white, which is the area that is excised. The other parts are the sections of landfill that you're probably familiar with. Figure five is the site that we're talking about and there's two sections, the corner and then the remainder bit. So you'll see that what is allowed is waste processing and treatment areas associated with the proposed compost manufacturing enclose. So the uses that are permitted in that area are what's defined on that plan. So if you look at the other map, you can see areas of landfill and other areas of waste processing. So there will be, so for example, if we would issue the approval, there will still be some ability for the developer to carry out waste processing if they were to carry that out down on this portion of the site. But there needs to be remediation and things like that before that can really function. So I suppose what you're probably wanting to know is, can the landfill happen even if the approval is issued?
Specifically over the site for, referred to in this proposed approval? If they don't exercise this approval, I assume the existing approval would continue until they exercise this approval. They're not legally obliged to take up the approval.
Well, the way that we've changed this is it restricts this section basically on this plan. So it no longer says that it's able to be used as landfill in this component.
So the moment this were to be approved, their landfill rights disappear, even if they don't...
Just in this bit.
Oh yeah, no, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah.
So whether they exercise this approval and don't even go ahead with it?
That's my understanding, yes.
May I add another question to that? So I talked before, sorry, I asked before about how sustainable or successful this operation may be, the running costs, the capital costs. So equally, if this is approved and they commence the composting in vessel and it's not sustainable financially and they have to stop, they can't do anything else?
They can still, so what's permitted there is waste processing and treatment associated with the proposed compost manufacturing enclosed. It is quite limited. I'm not sure if there is a contingency in mind. I don't think it is intended that they fail in this operation, to be honest. I would expect if the proposal is no longer financially viable or isn't financially viable, we may see another change, potentially to return it to something similar or different. It's a little bit hard to explain really what their contingency plan is, I don't really know.
That would require a further change.
Yeah, I would expect, rather than be restricted to something that is no longer financially viable, I would expect another change, to be honest. And what we might seek to do is, well, we wouldn't probably suggest that a landfill would be appropriate. It would be a different use that is considered appropriate under the current provisions. So that might be, you know, if the land is remediated, it might be appropriate for industrial uses at that point. So it would be a better alternative to the landfill ultimately.
I think Councilwoman had another question.
I think it might be my final question.
Ask as many as you want.
If issues did arise, odour issues in particular, obviously, they can take a long time, as we know, to be resolved by us or the state. This operation could continue during that time, I assume. There's nothing, just because there's a complaint or an investigation, that they could continue to operate because we don't actually, or the state doesn't actually prove that they've breached their conditions of approval or breached environmental issues until maybe one or two years down the track. So that's right, I take it, that they could continue to operate?
It does depend on the severity of the impacts. The court is able to make orders to prevent certain activities from occurring. It is up to enforcement authorities to initiate the court action to have that happen. And it's up to the court to weigh up the severity of the impact with the effect of the action. So it is possible. It has happened before. There have been orders given to carry out emergency works to prevent certain environmental harm, particularly stormwater-related environmental harm. It is possible, but it will depend on the circumstances. I think for a facility like this where there is a structure and the activity is happening within a structure and that the structure must be constructed before the activity can occur, gives us a lot more faith in the process, whereas an outdoor composting facility can just happen on the ground, you know, and unless if you're stopping it from happening on the ground, you're going to continue to have an impact. Whereas if you've got something contained and it requires the construction of the building in the first place, you're better set to manage those impacts.
Any other question, Mr Bowles? No, thank you, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
I have some questions in regards to our Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive. May I ask for Mr Davy to come up? That's okay?
Good morning, Brett Davy, Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Mr Davy. This is obviously an important decision for our council. Can I ask you if this complies with our Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive? And if it does, how does it, if it doesn't, how doesn't it?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So in essence, it does. So as part of the directive, it looked for us to establish a new standard and part of that standard is addressed in the requirements of our temporary local planning instrument as well as our draft scheme. In essence, this facility does almost everything that we've asked for in terms of the temporary local planning instrument and from my recollection of our draft scheme, it's compliant with the draft scheme provisions as well. I suppose for me, the facility being enclosed is a massive improvement for other technologies that are on offer and the complete enclosure, not just of the initial part of the process, but the receivable areas. I think there are two major problems with, if we say conventional composting that's outside, and that is when liquid waste come in, they're often already odorous. And if they're received in an open environment, the odours from them are going to be released. And the second component is they're then mixed and put through a composting process and pasteurised. If that process isn't enclosed, it's a problem. The other element is that the directive strives for best practice and improvement in the way we do things. I see this as an improvement in the way that the waste industry collectively deals with these issues.
Sorry. And in regards to the Odour Abatement Task Force, if there are odours, what is the process for residents?
Yes, so our recommendation to residents is to continue to report things to the pollution hotline. The reason why that's important is that when an odour is occurring or a nuisance is occurring, there'll be a set of conditions that are leading to that. So that'll be weather condition, it'll give a pointer as to at what time of day the issue was occurring and that can help the agencies identify potential odour sources. So whilst it'll be infuriating, and I've spoken to residents that are infuriated by this process and they've done multiple reports, the message is to keep on doing their reports so that there can be a base of evidence provided that can then be used to isolate potential odour sources.
So it'd be fair to say that with our Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive, we've gone out to the industry to say, please can you do best practice, can you improve how you're dealing with waste? And one of the responses has been this, to go to that in-vesselled best practice?
Yeah, yeah. And there's a range of technologies available for different waste solutions. This is one of the technologies available for composting and, you know, I'm not an expert in the field necessarily, but these types of enclosed facilities are, you know, the best of the best.
Do you have any other questions, Mr Davy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions of council officers? No? And that cuts a recommendation before us, and note that it is under delegation, that council resolved to approve development application 11235/2022/MAOC, subject to conditions and attachments. And I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilwoman. I think we'll now move into discussion. I think we'll probably have a lively discussion here.
Mayor, I have been to a similar facility and I couldn't discern noticeable odour outside of the facility, so I'm keen to see an in-vessel, a proper in-vessel facility around the Swanbank area.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm not supportive of this motion, either the approval, proposed approval, based on issues that arose and I'll be generally pretty brief. We're talking about a distance to a residential area of 1.7 kilometres, which is well within the distance in relation to, you know, other operations where communities have been affected for a number of years. The other issue is in relation to liquid waste and I accept that there are some liquid waste streams such as cooking oils and the meat processing derivatives, which were mentioned, but there's no, doesn't appear in this approval to be an exhaustive limitation on what may come in as liquid waste. The other issue is this outdoor area about the processed waste and that raises one of the key objections, that even though it's been processed, it's not within any vessels, it's in the outdoors. What happens if it rains? Can that trigger odours beyond just a small storage area? And I note that the report says at least six weeks or six weeks approximately. That does concern me. The other issue that arose is that courts would have the power, you know, as was mentioned, to require conditions like urgent applications, but within the legal context, we're in the hands of the Planning and Environment Court if there are operational difficulties. And I know this is a new technology, but the suggestion that this will solve all of the problems that can be expected, like, you know, the words such as a minimum or limited odours, that's the sort of thing that's been used in relation to other operations, albeit outdoor operations, you know, on the ground. But assurances that have been given in the past in relation to other operations have in many cases proved not to be correct. I accept there's a new technology. We're unsure if it's been properly tested, certainly by the applicant. I do have those concerns in relation to this approval. I believe that it's premature. The community would be concerned because, you know, there'd be some time to establish, you know, this new use, this new proposed use. And then are we going to be caught up in another community barrage of concern which affects a lot of people, affects the council, affects the state government? I just think it is a premature approval and would not necessarily win the support or the hearts and minds of many people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. May I just ask Mr Davy to come back to the, you've raised an issue there about the new technology and so on, so I just wanted, I'd like to flush that out a little bit if I can. So I just wanted, I'd like to flesh that out a little bit if I can. Thank you, Mr Davy. Um, it's been raised that this is new technology. Could you mind explaining or fleshing that out? Is it, is it or is it not? I know it's probably first for us in Ipswich, but yeah.
Um, it is new technology, but um in terms of when it was new, it's, it has been around in various iterations for for many years. It just hasn't been um broadly used in the Australian context a lot. Um, and so. And why is that? Uh, it is probably largely related to to cost. Uh, and we, like many other areas, relied on open air um organic processes. Um, and so I think we can talk to the issues associated with that. The the clincher for this type of facility for me is that you are dealing with um an element of physicality in terms of you physically enclosing some of the things that are likely to cause the most um problem. You're taking away a risk of, you know, for example, a an old-style organics facility that's based entirely on windrows wouldn't store liquid waste in a tank. Um, to put it bluntly, they'd bring liquid waste into an open pool, like a swimming pool, mix it with an excavator, mix green waste with an excavator and then put it into the windrows. So all of the odor that comes from that, whatever that liquid waste is, which could be um treatment plant, like sewage treatment plant leftovers, it could be awful from an abattoir. They mix all of that in an open way. Now, these types of facilities don't rely on that. Uh, they rely on putting those into liquid waste storage tanks. There's no um open pit where they're dumped. And so there's a lot more um, there's a lot more smarts in these facilities as well. So uh the pasteurisation process, which is the first part of composting, relies heavily on achieving um certain moisture uh content as well as temperature. And these um types of facilities actually have probes that manage those things. And so the ones that I've seen, uh, the operators not not only are there, but they could log in remotely to see what's going on with any particular batch of compost at any particular time.
And can that happen now with without that being enclosed?
Not to the same extent. There is certainly ob open-air composting, um, but not necessarily inherently built into the structures like like this one is.
Okay. Just to change the topic a little bit, um, Council Island mentioned the fact that there's been an increase in in odors the last few weeks. Sort of been my experience probably since May, if we've seen a big increase, and 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 in different areas. So we're seeing it in in Springfield as well. Is it, do you know if if there's a reason for that?
Um, not necessarily, but if you do look back through over the last few years, because I do keep an eye on the stats, there is often a um a drop in complaints through the summer seasons and an increase in complaints through winter. And that's just, it's mainly because of um different airflow. And then you get a bit of a temperature inversion where as odors are released, they tend to stick closer to the ground um and follow gullies and creeks. I am a little bit surprised with the volume of Springfield complaints that we are getting, uh, and that eastern into the city. You know, like, no evidence on this, but it seems to be um more complained about from that end of the city than has been before. Um, I've sought some advice from um the Department of Environment and Science on that, um, and I'll follow them up uh on that question. And obviously, that question is separate to the the matter at hand, but I know it's an important community issue um that needs to be taken seriously.
Through through you, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, is the technology proposed in the application in front of us not the technology that we're encouraging, you know, existing players in the market to transition to?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
And it it's it's similar, like, you know, it's imagine, it's kind of like cars. Cars are different brands and have different components and different types of engines. There's different versions of this technology out there and different ways to put it together. But this is broadly the type of technology we're wanting operators to move to. Um, and it is the same direction that the Department of Environment and Science are pushing the the relevant operators as well. So I'm hopeful that ultimately there'll be um a a legislative context and a set of standards and guidelines that mean that there is a time and a place um maybe for open-air composting, but it's not close to urban areas. And it's got very specific um feedstock. And everything else goes through a designed facility that's purpose-built to deal with it. Uh, and then, of course, they can pick and choose from the available technologies, including anaerobic digestion, the ability to generate electricity and use gas and all those sorts of things. Um, but ultimately having a designed um system with physical controls that's not relied upon just open controls.
Thank you.
Um, Mr Davy, could I just um ask you to clarify if we are to approve this app- application, the change? And and if um the practice or the activity is unsuccessful um from, you know, from a financial point of view and they they hit stop? We've talked about, could they then go back to the existing approval um activity being landfill, which they can? If they decide that they want to continue with composting, but in-vessel um is not viable, they want to do windrow, is there any ability for them? Sorry, what is the likelihood of that kind of change to council being approved? And are we setting a bit of a precedent, making it difficult for ourselves to decline such application, the fact that we've already approved some kind of composting?
So there's a couple of things there. The first thing is the way that this um application has been made, it removes this part of the site, sort of cookie cutters it out of the approval, and it replaces that part of the site with this particular application. And so if this is approved, then the approved design is all that can be built under this approval. If they, if it's not successful financially, um, and fingers crossed that if it's approved and it's built, it's not um i- is viable, but if it's not successful, essentially, they would, I imagine, just close it. Now, if they wanted to move back to open-air composting, back to landfill or to any other use, an industrial use, that would be fresh app- fresh applications. Um, either that would be a fresh application to go, look, let's just convert this to a factory, or it'll be another application to change this existing application, similar to the application we've got before us today, um, to change it to either a different form of technology, a different use, or even consider it going back to landfill. And then we get a fresh um opportunity to assess all of those eventualities.
Thank you. Council Island?
Mr Davy, have we already approved um a facility within the Swan Bank area to be in-vessel?
Yes, we have given in-vessel approval um for um a facility to the south, so the WMI facility, that's publicly available for people to look at. Um, slightly different technology, but um similar principles. And they have the addition of a anaerobic digester. So that's essentially a tank um where digestion happens and can generate um gas. And that gas can be used to power vehicles, run electricity plants, put back into the system.
Thank you. Council Kunsman?
Sorry to prolong this. Um.
No, please.
Can you clarify where the post-treatment material is stored? Is it actually out in the open air?
Yes. So there's a pasteurisation process in composting, and then there's a maturation compost. There's other stages, but they're essentially the two core phases. The pasteurisation is your raw product that's going to be the most odorous. And getting that to the right temperature and processing that is the the highest risk of the process. That's in the tunnels or inside the building in this type of facility. Once it achieves pasteurisation, and there's criteria in an Australian standard about that and and in the DES requirements, that then gets removed from the tunnels and placed in outdoor windrows. And at that point, it's compost, but it's not mature compost. And so the compost that you buy uh over the counter at at, you know, a hardware store or the compost that we use in our own parks and gardens may have different levels of maturity. So it might be matured for six weeks or eight weeks or 10 weeks, depending upon the circumstances. They obviously get it and blend it with soil as well. So the outdoor components are mature compost, or sorry, compost under maturation, sits in windrows, they rotate that, uh, and then when it goes out the door, they might blend it with sand, soils, those sorts of things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Davy.
Thank you.
Um, in furthering this, the discussion, I think, um, I think Council Kunsman, you and I visited a um a facility on the Gold Coast, I think, last year. And we could see where that in-vessel part was and also what was happening after we'd been in that vesselled um area. And can I say from a resident's perspective, I live in Raceview and I smell it too, and I put and I ta- I put things in. Um, I'll be supporting this because this is best practice. I don't want to keep doing things the old way. I'm sorry, I just, we'll keep getting smelly. We 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 do create waste. I won't um agree that we just keep asking waste owners, keep keep doing it the old way. I do embrace the fact that this will be invested. It's a significant investment. It's a it's a better way forward. It's better for our environment. It's better for our residents. Um, there there will be a cost, but it's a better outcome for our residents, especially as we grow. So I won't sit on my hands and allow us to keep doing the same old thing and wonder why we get the same old result. I want to, I want change and I want improvement. Uh, last week when these papers were made public, I spoke to a number of people from some of our local environmental groups, and they were very supportive of having in-vessel composting and supported the fact that we are now, you know, from our Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive, that we've given that indicator to the market, that we want to do things a better way, and we want to make sure that those odors are significantly reduced. So I will be supporting this when we go to the vote.
Um, but thank you, Mayor. Um, I I don't disagree with what you're saying. We we want to um do things differently, better. We want the best technology, the best outcome for our residents out here. Um, I've gone on record before, happy to do it again. Um, to to um, I it's my position that um we we shouldn't be um accepting, encouraging or approving any new operators or activities until we can get a compliance handle on the existing group that we have. There are so many problems. And if, you know, if if we can't manage those adequately alongside the state government, why would we be adding um to that? Um, but I, you know, it is not as simplistic as that. And and this um before us, um, we've heard today, if we don't approve it, it's not like it's going away. Landfill um has been approved on that side. Um, and when I think about our advanced waste directive and and, you know, what we as a group decided, the outcomes we were looking for, this is it. Um, I still have a couple of concerns. Council Tully has already pointed out um the issue, you know, within the product storage and refinement. You know, when you look for a loophole, there it is. For six weeks, you know, that product will be stored outside and they will be potentially adding um other um blends to it, sand, soil, clay. I- if the odor starts to emit from that, then our residents have to wait for compliance act, act, you know, action, investigations, proof that it is actually the cause of the offensive odor. Um, and we've seen those outside, you know, resource recovery areas at the landfill sites. That's the grey area. And I'm not suggesting for a minute this applicant will do that, but but this is where um the loophole um potentially lies. Uh, so, yeah, quite the dilemma, although I am excited that we're seeing another um operator um lifting the bar, lifting the standard for great technology, which is what our residents deserve.
And I I noticed, um, a lot of that, Council Island, so when you see that, when it goes the, after it's gone through that process in the in-vessel area and it does go out in the open for up to six weeks, um, it's it's a very minor odor. And I think, I think it was Mr Bowles talked about that, that it being one-seventh of what the normal odor is. But, yeah, that is, there's something for us to consider.
Um, Mayor, I I speak in support of the application in front of us. I think that progressing to technological advancements is the way to go um across the industry. Um, just thinking from, um, you know, a procurement perspective as well for Ipsa City Council, it gives us potentially another player in the market. Um, you know, in terms of the FOGO that we will be producing over the next five to 10 years, we need to see different players in the market if we're going to see a significant change. Um, and the ebb and flow of that particular market will see improvements across the board. So I think that putting a pin in this one and setting the standard quite high um and the expectation that we do want to see best-practice technologies employed in this sector will see greater benefits um than just the reduction in odor, but also prob- you know, council's financial position in the future and our ability to support our residents through the decision-making through procurement streams.
That that's true. At the, last week, we went to tender for for FOGO, that we only had received one response, and that was for open winrow, not not in-vessel at our last time. Thank you, Gatsa Fekna. Any other discussion? Um, if there's no other discussion, I guess, as as the mover, I won't have a right of reply. I think I've explained myself. Um, I'll put that matter to the to the vote. Uh, those in favour of this, please raise your hand. That's myself, Council Island, Council Doyle, Council Fekna, uh, the Deputy Mayor, and Council Kunsman. Those against, thank you, Council Tully, he's on leave of absence. Yes, um, thank you. Um, so it's, um, she's got a conflict of interest. Yes, sorry. Yes, so Council Johnnie has a conflict of interest. That's why I have not asked for her. Um, so that's passed. Um, can I thank you very much. This is something that we all discuss a a great deal um in in council. Um, but thank you very much for council officers for providing the level of detail that you have. And in our gallery, we've got a number of council officers who are also able to provide additional expertise. So thank you very much for the discussion. Um, and when we move on to the next item, I'll just wait for Council Johnnie to come back online. Thank you. I just want to check that Council Johnnie is back online.
I am.
Thank you very much. I'll move on to item three, which is the provisional projects approval. Um, and we have here a list of one, I think, four, five, five projects here. And the recommendation is that council approve the provisional project listed in table one below to design and construction in accordance with the capital investment provisional projects policy. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer beforehand? No, in that case, I will move that recommendation. And do I have a second? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll now open it up for discussion.
Mayor, um.
Thank you, Council Island.
I would, I'd just like to say that um we continue uh to have issues around new schools when they're built in Division One. And um part of the issue is that they do put, um, the state does put in pedestrian crossings, but they don't always do the footpaths that join up a pedestrian crossing to the one that's closest to the school, and then council has to pick up um that added cost. So um it's ju- just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And also with the bus stops too as well. So I can see that you've got one there for Cowie Street and Debing Heights to connect the two school crossings. Thank you. And also, I think, for Red Bank Plains um Rec Reserve Two, some installation of smart lighting for various fields. I think that's something that's been a passion project for you as well.
It it has been because um there's a long distance from some of the clout um clubhouses back to the car parks late at night. Um, so this will make it so much easier for the people to get in their car and then turn off all the lights. So I think that technology is um going to keep everyone safe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the park bench at Woolley Park, obviously Trevor, was he the one that used to do the um?
He was the founder of the Christmas lights. So he was the first street that, he was the first person in a street that got everyone to do their lights. He was Santa Claus there for years and years. Um, he has since passed away, but his family was always keen to have a bench um with his um plaque on it just to recognise that that's where we started.
Yeah, I think in Nolan Street, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, it was.
Yeah, thank you. And obviously, I can see there too, an installation of concrete pathway connecting the community centre.
Yes, that's really difficult because um the um pathway from Red Bank Plains all go across to the Woolworth Shopping Centre. But our community centre's on the other side of the road, and for people that are in wheel, on wheelie walkers or um electric
Yep.
cars, vehicles, um, there's no way for them to safely get to the community centre. So they've raised it for some time as an issue.
Okay. No, thank you. I think the last one was there is the um pathway, a concrete pathway for the Soldiers Memorial Hall at um Anzac Park.
Yes, if I may, Mayor, thank you. Um, the matter was raised and brought forward to me by the executive members of Rosewood R R S L sub-branch on commemoration services, um, where the Senate House, uh, Plinth, uh, memorial is, there's a square curb um to mount prior to getting to it from from where the area where the the public sit for the service. And there's, of course, as we have a, thankfully, an aging veteran community uh who get to live um. uh who get to live um long lives. They uh tend to have mobility devices, wheelchair or um scooters that they need to um utilise and it prevents them from gaining access to that area to lay a wreath. In uh making it more inclusive for everybody, uh, we asked uh council officers to come up with a design to en- enable access. And uh this is the, the proposal that's come up. So I, I do uh thank officers for um the, the work in being able to uh provide that access for those members of our community who, who want to access that area during commemoration service.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnny, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Unanimous and carried. We move on to item four, which is the southern, and it's written here as Southern Recycling and Refuge Centre and Animal Management Facility location. I think we'll have a discussion about changing the title of that, potentially a resource recovery centre. But the recommendation before us is that council endorsed the site at H31 Red Bank Plains Road, Red Bank Plains, as the preferred location for the new southern refuse and recycling and a new animal management uh facility. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this? No? Okay. Um, I'll move this recommendation. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Appreciate that. Um, in moving, I'm really pleased to see this report come before us today as we continue to ensure council's infrastructure and services are keeping up with our rapidly growing city. I do recommend that we do change the name slightly from Re- Southern Recycling and Refuge Centre to Southern Resource and Recovery Centre. We know that 70% of Ipswich's growth is occurring in the corridor between Springfield and, and Ipswich Central. And therefore it's critical we have infrastructure in place to adequately serve our fastest growing suburbs. I note that this site is unique in that it provides the space and suitable conditions to bring our resource recovery and animal management services together on one site, creating further efficiencies and replacing our flood impacted pound at West Ipswich. As we know, both our River View and Rosewood Recycling and Refuge facilities are more than 30 years old and operating well over capacity. This lack of capacity has held council back from being able to offer benefits to the community such as a tip shop and tip vouchers. So I'm very excited to see planning for this centre now progressing, which will include the city's first, um, very first tip shop. The design and planning for the Southern Resource Recovery Centre will see our first centre delivered with a focus on resource recovery at the core of its purpose. It will facilitate the recovery, sorting and transfer recyclable materials from household waste. It's very important for our residents to note that there are no materials to be stored on this site. All are transported off-site within one to three days of collection. Council has undertaken significant community consultation around what our community wants to see in our future waste infrastructure. And they have told us that they want resource recovery centres that are easily accessible within 10 metre, 10 minute drive from them. They want to see the uh re- uh wait times greatly reduced. They would like to see a tip shop uh set up. They would like to see tip vouchers. Uh, they have expanded, uh, they want expanded options for recycling and recovery. And they want to maintain the current flexible operating hours of our facilities. So I see that the Southern Resource Recovery Centre will be ticking all those boxes. And I therefore intend to support the recommendations in this report. And I'm quite excited that our city's taking yet another important step towards resource recovery and diverting even more waste away from landfill. Um, I've got up for any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm uh supportive of this um as well, but just with one change, um, and I've received an email from a member of the public who must read every word of every line. Um, I think some others received it.
I think it might be the same email, councillor Tully.
Dare I say, from his long experience in local government, uh, even though I don't always agree with him, he's a decent enough sort of person. Um, he lives in the western sector of the city.
Good division for.
Can I suggest that the word endorse be changed to approve? He, the, the point that he raised, and it is correct, that endorsement suggests that a decision has already been made. Um, rather than, yeah, by officers
Okay.
under some sort of delegation.
Okay.
So if I could just uh suggest that, thank you.
I'll just check with the, the CEO. Will there be any issues with that? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Agreed.
Okay. Um, as the mover, I'm happy with changing endorsed to approve. I'll just check with the second councillor. Yes, thank you. Um, any other discussion?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I also just want to add that it is good to see that uh um, within the planning, uh, there is also uh the prospect for the multi-use of the site um with the uh new animal management uh centre being located there as well. So very good way of undertaking uh or using an asset, um, multi-using it in that way.
And I think, incorrect if I'm wrong, uh councillor, was there some history to this site being selected as well in the past? Do you?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think the previous council had realised a long time ago that the River View site was going to um become inadequate.
Hmm.
And um, and so they identified this site as a, a good site. Um, so I'd just like to give um some credit to the previous council for having worked on this a long time ago. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnny, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Unanimous for council. We're now moving on to item five, the Asset and Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report for June, the end of the financial year 2023. Uh, does anyone have any uh questions of the relevant council officers? No? Um, the recommendation before us is that this is a report concerning the performance of the capital delivery by the Asset Infrastructure Services Department for the month of June 2023, and I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I just know it's the, the largest, I think, capital delivery uh project that our council's ever delivered on as our, as we, we grow, as well as doing flood recovery. Um, and I just note, CEO, the number of overspends, underspends and going through that and um and see how that's being, I guess, um prioritised and reprioritised and managed um as we go, go along. So thank you very much. Any other comments? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Johnny, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's passed. We're onto item six, the exercise of delegation report. Does anyone have any um questions of the relevant council officers on this? No? In that case, I will move the recommendation that the exercise of delegation report for the period 19th of June to 2023 to the 26th of July 2023 be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Uh, any discussion? No? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor uh Johnny?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's carried. We're now move on to item seven, which is the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report. Um, may I ask for the relevant council officer to speak about um the P and E court and, and about Cleanaway? Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Councillor, this is Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
And thank you, Mr Bowles. Now, the Planning Environment Court found that the proposed Cleanaway development that would have allowed for landfill to be made larger could not be supported and was refused in full. Um, and we've been waiting to s- to see if Cleanaway may appeal this decision. It's my understanding that they're not, but do you have any other updates?
Uh, that's correct. The appeal period is over, um, and no appeal has been lodged. So um, my understanding is that they were seeking to continue with what is permissible under the current approval, um, which is cells three B. There's still some work to be done in that space. Um, as the operational works is still with us. Um, at the same time, um, the land track appeal period is over, um, at the same time. So we haven't received appeal for that.
We haven't. That's fantastic news.
Um, I, I suppose, well, I'm happy as the last update is that we are still working with um our experts and legal team um to formulate conditions for the, the Austin BMI application. So that's still underway.
Thank you. Um, and I also understand that um, um, with cell three B for Cleanaway, that on the first of June, the state government have a, approved for that, for, for works to be there? Or what's the?
Uh, I'll have to check in on the process of the operational works application that's.
But from the environmental authority, the EA.
I'll, I could check that. Uh, I'll have to get online for that though.
Or less, I think Mr Davies said, yep. Is it okay? Sorry. Sorry, Mr Bowles, I should have asked Mr Davies.
I'd just like to be able to see it in front of me before I say the answer.
Thank you, Mr Dave Bowles. I'll call on Mr Davies. Thank you.
Morning again.
Morning, morning again. Thank you, Mr Davies. Um, I note that um the state government have given an, an environmental authority on the first of June for Cleanaway and cell three B. Do you mind explaining?
Of course. So there was previously a, essentially a notice of intention by Department of Environment Sites to change the conditions of the current environmental authority to remove cell three B, essentially cease the facility as it was, or as it is. Um, that has evolved over time into an adjustment to the conditions which have been issued at the start of June by the Department of Environment Sites. Um, in essence, the adjustment is to address the uh groundwater issues and some of the issues that were experienced in February last year, um, and ongoing, so that that's not repeated. And so in practical terms, it means that landfill potentially continues uh for that cell. Uh, it's a limited cell, so there's not an enormous volume with a uh expectation of a greatly improved liner system and a system to address groundwater uh interaction for that cell. So.
So the department of science aren't closing it?
No.
They're not closing? They want it to be remediated?
That's right. Yes. Yeah. So in practical terms, once this cell is completed, then the balance of the site gets completely remediated with capping and all of those sorts of things. They finalise the landfill gas collection system and then the site is closed and it will be on maintenance from that point in time. So what it means in, in the interim is that at some point, um, landfilling may, may recommence on that site for a limited period of time and that will cease once the, the cell's finished.
Okay. And obviously for council, so that, since that EA has, the environmental authority has been approved, um, council's now working through an operational works. Is that my understanding?
Correct. Yes. So it's a change to the operational works. So for all intents and purposes, this landfill cell is approved uh through the environmental authority as well as existing operational works approvals. The environmental authority changes in June meant that there are consequential design changes to that approved cell. So we're modifying, or we've been sought uh by Cleanaway to modify the existing operational works approval to address the conditions of the Department of Environment Sites. And that's primarily about the design of the, the landfill liner, how it stitches into the existing liner system and the existing cells and how it manages groundwater.
Okay. And can council refuse that? Can we say we don't want it? We want cell three B to close? Could, if we were hypothetically wanting to, could we say we don't want, want to do that? What's, what's our legal obligation?
Of course, we can approve or refuse. Uh, the complex, the complexity of this one though is by refusing, you're potentially going back to um a liner system that is not necessarily adequate and it's inconsistent with the latest environmental authority conditions.
Okay.
So our, we're reviewing that at the moment with an objective of ensuring that it complies with the environmental authority conditions and represents a improved situation, noting that it's not possible for us to refuse it in a way that stops
Okay.
this happening.
Okay. And will that come to council for a decision or is that part of?
Uh, I believe through the, uh, it's a delegated authority to officers.
Okay.
And it's a code assess, it's equivalent of a code assessable application and a change to an existing application that was also approved by officers, by the delegation, of course.
Thank you. Are there any other ca- questions? Oh, thank you very much, Mr Davies.
Thank you.
Um, I'll move the, the, this, the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report. Um.
Beg my pardon, may I? I, I thought uh you were asking if there was any more questions with regards to that particular item.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Uh, I do have a question with regards to
Apologies.
another item.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Um, for the uh property located 198 to 238 Fernvale Road, Brassel, the status is listed as uh the apprentice discussion's ongoing. The matter is listed for review on the second of August. Today's the 10th. Just wondering if I could have an update on that.
Thank you.
I have had contact from um numerous um residents, uh particularly in Brassel, specifically in uh around the Emerald Hill Estate area where the, that um application is.
I want you to ask your question.
Uh, so we are close to um finalising that application. So what's happened is in the, sorry, I'll speak closer to the mic. Um, there is a um, a, a change application to the existing approval which significantly reduces um the number of lots. I think it, I think it's um, that's about nine lots. I'll have to check that. Which uh was originally approved, you know, a much larger amount. I think it was up to a hundred and something like lots. So we've been processing that application in the background while the appeal has been basically um in, in a balance in, in, in roundabout way. Um, because this other process to issue the approval will provide uh an alternative development footprint that is significantly improved to the existing approval, which was the subject of the extension application. So what we expect to occur is the change application will be approved through delegation, just as we would be assessing any change application. Um, and as a result of that, we'll be able to uh extend the life of the approval because it has been changed to the outcome that we support. So the initial refusal was on the basis that the koala mapping had come in since the original approval was issued and the existing approval had lots in the area where there was koala vegetation. Uh, so we didn't seek to approve that extension. But now that the, the application has been changed to a significantly reduced number of lots and the vegetation has been protected and, and we're satisfied with that, we're able to allow the extension. So what the outcome will be essentially is once the change application is, has been finalised, which I believe has been finalised, um, the next process in the court is to allow the appeal, which is to allow for the extension. Um, but only because we've changed the application. So um it's, it's a bit of a complicated one. We don't normally have many appeals on extension applications. But the um, the outcome that we've achieved with the change application is, is huge improvement, absolutely huge improvement. Um, large amount of vegetation's been retained that was formerly um proposed to be lots.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And specifically that vegetation is the, the, the line where it heads down
To the creek.
along the highway as opposed to Fernvale Road.
So um there is a section um along the highway, but predominantly around the creek.
Any other question, Mr Bowles, on this or any other matter? Nope. Thank you, Mr Bowles. Thank you. I'll move that this um report concerning a status update with respect to current court actions assert, and asserted with development planning applications be approved. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you, councillor Kunselman. I open up for any discussion. Thank you, councillor Tully.
I'll be a quick, uh, mayor.
Take as long as you want, councillor Tully.
Page two thirty-one. Um, it, it lists a property at Bundamba, which is listed under division two, which is about five kilometres, four or five kilometres uh to the east.
Hmm.
Can that be corrected, uh, please?
Yes.
Uh, that's the first thing. The other thing on page.
To division three, so CEO.
Yeah. Page um two thirty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, the appeal um in relation to uh, uh, at Yamanto, uh, the hearing was uh concluded on the 21st of October 2022. That was almost 10 months ago. And still states awaiting judgment. I just reiterate earlier comments that I've made in relation to decisions and uh around Queensland. There are some councils, particularly those with uh um, yeah, many applications that go before the Planning and Environment Court who are concerned with the delays. I think there should be perhaps the need for additional judges to be appointed to the Planning and Environment Court. Um, I think it's important in the town planning sphere that there is, um, if it's going, if it ends up being finally approved, that, you know, it shouldn't be another delay of a 10 months. Um, if there are objections and it's going to be refused, there needs to be certainty in a much shorter timeframe. This general issue has come up at the Local Government Association Policy Executive. Uh, many decisions, I, I would say, through the P and E court are made in a timely manner. But I think anything approaching a year, most people would think was uh probably not acceptable. I just think that it needs to be reviewed to generally to, to ensure that appeals are heard and determined in, in a quicker than about a year's timeframe.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Johnny, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. I don't have any notices of motion. All matters arising. So um, I'll call, it's 10:37. So we'll have the Governance and Transparency Committee meeting. So we'll have the Governance and Transparency Committee meeting start at, I guess, 11:10 AM and close the meeting at, now at 10:37. Thank you.